For our regular meeting, we have to call to order a finance corporation meeting. So we have a couple of action items. The first is the election of officers. So the motion, the recommended motion is, I have to do, I have to ask, I'm going to do a motion for the approval to appoint Ann Meyer as president, Julie Kuhnhein as vice president, and Brian Robinson as secretary of the finance corporation. Do I have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The second thing that we have to do is approve the minutes from the finance corporation for last, for March thirteenth of last year. So I need a motion for the approval of the minutes from the meeting of March thirteenth, 2023.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes, and I think we can adjourn. All right.
Our next meeting can't start until six thirty.
Oh, okay.
We get more break.
We did it so quickly. We did it so quickly. Does that sound as cozy as it appears?
That's great. Best one ever.
Best one, all right.
We'll start in about two minutes.
You all please rise for the pledge for the flag.
Pledge of the flag to the United States of America into the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. We will start this meeting first with anything that we want to talk about, some bravos, updates, board updates of any kind, so if anybody has things to share, that would be great.
Well, one thing, I didn't have my notes from the working board meeting, but I do remember that Matilda is coming up at the middle school production. Matilda Junior is going to be happening, I think, this month. Twenty-fifth through the twenty-eighth, so obviously awesome to see the kids and the high school students I know get involved as far as like helping produce and make it all happen, so middle school performers, go check it out.
We also had lots of programs in December, year-end programs, chorus and things like that, and they were well-attended and beautiful, beautiful just programs. The other thing I want to talk about is high school is starting scheduling, high school and middle school are starting scheduling, so parents should be aware that that's a time that you need to keep talking to kids and figuring out what they want to take next year. I can't believe you're already doing that for next year, but it's underway, so. Anybody else? Okay, you got things?
Yeah, we had a couple of things. Camden Davis from Woodville, first grader from Woodville, was selected as one of the state winners for the inauguration poster contest across all the state. It was a pretty big honor, pretty cool to see, see one of our four Thomas kids at the inauguration and honored there. We're going to honor Alyssa Vanderpoel here in just a few minutes, so I'll stop on that bravo for now, we'll get back to that one. Johnson Elementary is progressing towards, they were nominated, they received state nomination to compete nationally for a green ribbon school, so you have, you've heard of blue ribbon schools, this one is an environmental education, and so they will be competing nationally and hopefully recognized as a green ribbon school soon, we'll hope to hear more of that. And we just received some notice, we honored some regional winners for our broadcast program for regional Emmys, and we just found out, hopefully we'll be honoring them again in February, but we found out we have three students who are among six national finalists, so we have three students in our broadcast program that will be competing for a national Emmy in broadcast, which, which I think is super awesome.
And did I, when I read that report, wasn't it two thou, it started at two thousand that had been nominated, so to be the final, you know, in six out of two thousand is huge.
And we were, we were excited that they made it at the regional level, just the number of states that they represented, and so to be one of six finalists is significant. We want to encourage anyone who has a prospective kindergarten student, next week we start kindergarten registration, important week for us, so kindergarten registration starts next week, and I think before we meet again, the Booster Bash will be on February third at Highland Country Club, so good stuff coming in the new year, we're excited to start 2024.
Okay, the next section is school board recognition, so I can send it back to you.
Yeah, January is school board recognition month, and so we were very pleased to have a fantastic Board of Education. You know, I'll speak on behalf of our district when I say that we have amongst us some true public servants, and the five board members that we have here tonight really hold forward the idea that our schools are the heartbeat of the community, and, and I can tell you without exception, every question that comes up, every decision that's made, every thought that is allocating resources or making challenging decisions, it always starts with what is best for our students, what is best for our staff, and what's best for our community, and so we are, we are really, really fortunate to have true public servants here who take the arrows, who serve selflessly, whatever stipend that they would get, they have never received, they actually take those stipends, give them back in the form of scholarships for our students, prospective teachers, and they give back to teachers to continue their, their education, so really cannot say enough thank you, thank you, thank you. We are gonna, we've got a little gift on behalf of the district that we'd like to give to you, and I encourage the audience to please join me in a round of applause for our school board. And then while, while I'm handing out presents, I'm going to ask Stephanie Ewall on behalf of the Teacher Association to come up and speak on behalf of our board as well.
Good evening. I'm here on behalf of the Fort Thomas Education Association to express our gratitude and the gratitude of the FTIS teachers for the dedication and commitment that our board members embody as they lead our schools to be the best in the state. The experience we have with our board in the Fort Thomas is a very special one. Here in the Fort Thomas, our board members are our neighbors, friends, and our colleagues. Our FTA representatives have always been able to easily contact them with questions and concerns. Our board has consistently remained committed to helping our teachers and students reach for their dreams. Every year, this board donates their stipends and provides scholarships for our students and teachers. This is just one of the many examples of why our FTIS board members are so special. Please accept these small tokens of our teachers' gratitude for the servant leadership each of you provide for our community. Thank you, and they are small, so sorry.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, thank you for those kind words, and I think I'd speak for all of us. We really enjoy doing this, we enjoy, you know, there's, there's ups and downs, but we enjoy, we've enjoyed the journey with each other and with you all and the children, so thank you for letting us serve. Okay, next thing is the Tradition of Excellence Award, you going to do that?
I'd like to invite Alyssa Vanderpoel up, please, to the front. To the front. You know, we, we have incredible teachers, we have incredible staff members in our district, and every now and then we get to have one that is recognized at a level that's even beyond the boundaries of Fort Thomas, and so I'm really excited to announce to our public, to present to our Board of Education a Tradition of Excellence Award. Miss Alyssa Vanderpoel was, was first nominated and then received regional recognition as a, as a music educator, elementary music educator of the year, and at that point she was able to go to the state level, and we were very pleased last month to be informed that Alyssa was recognized as the Kentucky Elementary Music Educator of the Year for the entire state of Kentucky. So very, very. Alyssa will be, will be recognized at the KMEA conference in February, early February, before we meet again. We're super excited.
And she's also an amazing singer as well, having attended an event.
I have a gig Thursday night if you want to come.
Okay, well, I'd love to see you again at the Chorus and Bass.
Can I give an update?
Yeah.
Because the, as you know, I coach the middle and high school forensic team, which is competitive speech and drama, so we have our regional tournament coming up as well as our state tournaments coming up. So February third are regionals, and then end of February is state for middle school, and then beginning of March, state for high school, so bring out the band, bear and cheer them on.
Are we hosting any of those?
No.
Okay, so I was going to put a plug for judges, but.
Oh, yes, well, we always need judges, which is so fun.
You know, at the beginning of this, of our meeting, Ann talked about some choral programs and the different things that were happening in December, and, and I can't go without saying that I was at the Johnson Winter Concert, and probably the best thing you can say about a teacher is when they can prepare their students so much that they're ready to do it on their own.
Especially those first graders.
I saw first graders, every single first grader, every voice was heard, Alyssa got them started, she left the stage, and it was probably a fifteen to twenty-minute presentation.
Twenty-two minutes and there you go.
And, and it was flawless, and it was beautiful, and it is a great testament to the work that you do, so thank you, Alyssa.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. Should we tell her the real prize if she doesn't have to stay? All right, the next section on our agenda is the Student Showcase at HMS. So Erica, are you, are you going to come and present? Great.
Hi, guys. First, I want to say thank you to our board for all that you do, we really do appreciate you, and I feel on behalf of like my principal colleagues and the staff that, you know, you guys are just really the best, and we thank you for all of the support that you give us all the time, mostly breakfast, but also the other stuff. And Mr. Augustine was supposed to be here with these three lovely young ladies, but he had a family emergency, however, I feel like they have got it in, I mean, hands down, so I'm just going to let them take it away.
Before we get started, we wanted to say a thanks to the board for everything they do.
That's very nice.
Okay. Hi. Hi, I'm Carson Jacobs, and I have Finley Duke and Isla Green here with me, who are going to be telling you a little bit about the Student Council here at HMS during the fall semester of 2023. What is Student Council? Student Council is a voluntary club here at HMS, made up of students in grades six through eight. Depending on their schedule, students can come and go as they please. The Student Council goals are to provide leadership and service opportunities for HMS students, raise awareness about issues concerning middle school students, and run fundraisers and charities and organize, run fundraisers for local charities and organizations.
Red Ribbon Week. Red Ribbon Week is meant to raise awareness of the dangers of drug abuse. Students took a drug-free pledge, teamed up with local agencies to spread awareness, learned about the dangers of certain drugs, and participated in Fund Spirit Days.
The next thing the Student Council does is that we do Veterans Day, which we created lessons for all the social studies classes to learn about what Veterans Day is and who Veterans Day is celebrated for. We also organized cards and letters for the veterans at the VA hospital, which they really enjoy. Also, we held a bake sale, which was all student-made goods, and we raised $550 for the Honor Flight Network.
One of the largest events that this council does is the annual canned food drive. HMS has a long history of canned food drive success, although there have been some recent struggles due to COVID. Our goal this year was 23K in 2023. The beneficiaries were Salvation Army, Brighton Center, and St. Vincent de Paul.
And you guys met that goal, correct? You surpassed it.
Yes, we did. It's a new school record.
Well, we'll just have to hope it next year.
Twenty-four.
These are photos of posters that we hung up around the school, the winning class of who brought in the most canned goods, Ms. Klein, and all of those boxes are filled with canned goods.
On November eighteenth, 2023, we held our first annual day of service. Over 150 students participated in services, including volunteering in their neighborhoods, volunteering in, at small businesses around town, including Fort Thomas Coffee, The Post, and Grassroots and Vine. They also collected cans for the canned food drive. Homeowners then left canned, or left canned goods on their porches for students to collect. Drop-off stations were all around town so students could drop off their goods after they collected them, and some students even made flyers to inform homeowners of this event. These are some photos from that day. Some students, you can see, went around and collected cans, others helped by washing windows, and they put them all into the truck when they were done.
Over the weekend, the goal for the canned food drive seemed like a long shot. We weren't sure if we were going to make it, because going into the final day, we were over 3,000 cans short, but on Tuesday, our hard-working students brought in over 11,000 cans, bringing our grand total to...
Thirty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty cans, which was a new school record for the canned food drive at HMS.
Thank you. Student Council appreciates this opportunity to present the work we have done to make Highlands Middle School and Fort Thomas a better place. Our success is the result of community support, encouragement of faculty and staff, and dedication and hard work of students and Mr. Augustine.
Very good. Awesome stuff.
Tell me what, what grade you all are in.
Sixth grade.
I'm in eighth grade. I'm also in eighth.
Eighth grade, okay, so this, did you all do service hours last year, or is this the first year that you have to do the service hours that match your grade level?
This is the first year.
Okay, okay, so you're well on your way for your, your sixth and your eighth, correct?
Yeah.
Well, good, we applaud you.
Mm-hmm.
And people came to my door, and there have been years that people have not come and collected, so there's lots of, lots of action and spirit out there.
I know you guys are busy with other activities and homework and everything else, so good for you for, you know, devoting the time and, and awesome charities that you're giving to, and great stuff.
Now, do you all have leadership positions on the Student Council? Like president?
No, it's honestly just an equal club bureau grade.
It is, okay.
Awesome.
What was your favorite project? You guys were pretty active in one semester's time.
Yeah, sure.
My favorite project was the canned food drive because we like got way more than our goal, and we were really proud of how much we helped the Salvation Army, the Brighton Center, and St. Vincent de Paul.
So as you all were kind of leading up to that final day, you said you were about, I think, 3,000 cans, how did you get that final push to, to, and then kind of blow past the goal?
I think just like a lot of students, like, we really made it like known, not like we were that many short, and I think a lot of people just went like over that goal and stuff, and like exceeded like what they were asked to do.
All right, do you have any big plans for second semester? Yeah. That's right. Any spring stuff?
We're not exactly sure.
That's okay, that's okay.
You guys are just starting.
You guys are living the motto, the lead, learn, and serve, and we applaud your efforts and the fact that you've included so many different students across the middle school to great energy, and it's connecting the community very well, so very proud of you.
Get your school board.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good job.
Mr. Fals, could we have anybody for community forum? Okay, all right, so before we get into the action items, those of you who would like to leave the meeting, you may, I know you came to watch your kids, and that's awesome. Mr. Wisman, you have to stay. You can stay.
You can see projects updates on the list.
Okay, the action items, the first thing on our agenda is the organization of the board, so the first part is the election of officers, so we had a little bit of a preview of what that was going to look like, but the election of the officers, I need a motion for the appointment of Ann Meyer as chairperson, Julie Kuhnhein as vice chairperson, Brian Robinson as secretary, and Andy Remlinger, Andrew Remlinger as treasurer. May I have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, all right, that passes. The next section is the approval for the regular meetings, so we do have an attachment, are you going to show that attachment up there? Okay, that you can go to without my having to go through all of them, but we need a motion for the approval to hold regular monthly board meetings for 2024 at six-thirty on the second Monday of each month, and hold regular monthly working meetings at either eight-fifteen or four o'clock on Thursday prior to each monthly meeting, with the exception as identified on the 2024 board meeting dates list. So that is the attachment that you can find on the board website, so I need a motion for the approval of those regular and, and working board meetings.
Motion, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Those are on the website. Those are on the website, yes.
Will be by tomorrow.
Yes, it will be. All right, the next part for the operation of board that we need to go through is, I need approval to donate stipends for the regular monthly meetings into a special fund for targeted purposes to be identified for the board. Anybody would like to do a motion for that, and then I'll need a second.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right, and then the last part of this is the appointment of board meeting, board members to committees, and those also will be posted on the website, and Amy can show you what that looks like, really very similar to last year, there's been a little bit of change from salary and budget committee, but they, you can find those on the website as well. So I need a motion for the approval of the 2024 board committees list.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, all right, so that is the section of the organization of the board, and the next thing we'll go to is the roof replacement. You're on, Jerry.
All right, so in terms of update on the project, there's not much change from last month, primarily due to the weather. There's a couple kind of, you know, tidy up things that they still need to take care of, but, you know, I would say ninety-eight point five percent of their work is done. So there's just certain things you don't want to do, and there's certain areas of the roof you do not want to get on when the weather is this, this cold, so it's not going to, you know, they're not, it's not structural, has nothing to do with the integrity of the roof, it just has to do with completing the project. So, you know, in terms of project update, it'll probably be that into the spring. You know, they do need to get those things, and, and, you know, if we get a nice day here, there, we're supposed to get a day in the fifties, but it's supposed to rain that day, so if weather works out the day, you can get those done, that might change, but I'm just trying to be conservative, so. Any questions?
So no impacts by that timing or anything?
No.
So whether it's now, March?
No.
Stayin' dry, so.
Yeah.
That's, you know, that's the goal there.
And that doesn't mean here, there, we might not have a situation where, you know, let's say we do get three inches of rain, and that might expose something we're unaware of. We'll report that, and they'll deal with it.
Okay. Any other questions?
We do have, for action, we have change order one, and we've talked about this a little bit throughout the project, where as the project went on, they identified areas of wet insulation. Now, in the base bid of the project, we had X number of square feet that we had in the base bid for them to replace wet insulation, knowing that there might be an opportunity where additional wet insulation will be discovered once the layer of the roof was taken off. We had some areas that we thought could very well be, most of those areas, as well as a few more turned out to have wet insulation that would be in our best interest long-term for the new roof to go ahead and replace. We had unit pricing in place for that, and at the end of the project, once the roof was substantially complete, then they would present one change order for all of that amount. There was a contingency of about $40,000 in the project, and the total change order request, number one, for this wet insulation, additional wet insulation replacement is $30,915.
Okay. All right, then, I need a motion for the approval of change order number one in the amount of $30,915 for the Highlands Roof Replacement Project.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right, what else you have? All right, what else you have?
She had a pay application, I believe it's pay application number seven, for the amount of $51,335.90. That leaves roughly $40,000 plus the change order. They cannot fill for the change order until you have approved it and it's accepted by the Department of Education. So essentially, there's about $70,000 left on the project.
Okay. All right, any questions? Okay, I need a motion for the approval of pay application number seven to Embus Roofing in the amount of $51,335.90 for the Highlands Roof Replacement Project.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes. Okay, guaranteed energy savings?
Again, in a similar fashion to the last report, things continue to progress. We, we had a slowdown of work on the controls around the holidays. Kind of our main employee for Comfort Systems has been doing the work. He also had a vacation scheduled for the first of the year. So the pace has slowed a little bit over the last three weeks, but we continue to have work being completed, continue to work on troubleshooting, different things with CMTA. CMTA is still maintaining a presence in the district, although it's not always Derek, who had been kind of the project lead. Right now, kind of gentleman by the name of Lonnie Pike, who is really one of their lead controls guy, is who's here more often, working, you know, approximately four 10-hour days in the district, some days 30. So they're still available anytime we need them and we communicate quite often. And they're still working diligently with Comfort Systems to get everything done and completed to our satisfaction.
Okay, this has been, you know, a year-long project. So, I mean, my, my thought that it's just been moving exactly how it should, just moving down the road, do you feel the same way?
I do. I, I anticipated, as with every large project we do that includes HVAC, and we've talked about this a lot, the controls, it's a variable you just can't predict. And in this day and age, I feel like all controls contractors we talk to, they're short on staff. The number of qualified people, number of quality people, they're kind of, some of them are moving from company to company. Comfort Systems, I do know, has had to deal with a few issues with some people who have worked on our projects before. They're very qualified people out on extended medical leaves. That's been a part of slowing them down. You know, it just, having been through a lot of these before, you know, you want to get everything done and then everything tied up, but you also want to do it right.
And I mean, even with all those challenges, we're already, and I think we always stress this because we want to point it out, we're already seeing savings.
Absolutely, yes.
Even ahead of the schedule on that part, so.
I was gonna say, we're warm, we're cool, and we're saving money, so.
The vast majority of things that are gonna, that were necessary to generate those savings are complete. What, what they're doing now is just about giving us a little bit more control. And I'm sure there'll be a little bit of savings there, but the majority of that work that's going to generate that large money is done, so.
To your point, the controls, tinker with over and over and over whatever. But I mean, like, school started, it was hot one place, cold one. For the most part, we're in pretty decent shape there.
We feel pretty good and, and coming off the holidays, you're always a little nervous about how things will be after things have been shut down for two weeks. I feel like we had fewer fires for myself and our district staff to put out last Wednesday than we've had in a number of years. It was, it was not as difficult a day as we've experienced in the past in that timeframe.
And, and we have a very, a fairly sizable amount of money left to pay on the project. And so, so while, while there's still some outstanding work, CMTA's been, been very smart about being conservative about their request on pay ads.
Yeah, we, we have over half a million dollars, even after the next action item that, that we're, we're still, for lack of a better term, withholding. As they do work, they'll ask for that, but they're not asking for anything that, that is not justified for them to ask for. I've got years to go before I get to the level of Johnson.
I'm even joking, but.
I know.
All right, any other questions? Okay, I need a motion for the approval of pay application number 10 to CMTA Incorporated in the amount of $74,241.90 for the Guaranteed Energy Savings Contract Program.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you. All right, the next section is draft working budget. You're going to speak to that.
Yes. And Andy Reminger is here as well, if we have any questions that want a second opinion or additional information around. We are in, in budget season and budgets, as, as we've discussed in many years, come in three different cycles. What you're going to be presented with tonight is the draft budget. Draft budget comes in, in January. It'll be followed in May with our tentative budget. And in our district, we work really hard to make sure that that one is, 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 is pretty much spot on. And then it's finalized with, with our actual fiscal year budget in September, which becomes the working budget. And so the, the document you see up here is a summary of our budget that Amy's been working with me and our directors and assistant superintendents to predict as best as possible. Best way to talk about a draft budget is, it is, it is the, it's probably the one that's the most highly educated guesses. And so I do think it encompasses the overwhelming majority of, of projects that we know about from instructional resources and maintenance and some of, some of what we are looking towards the future in, in next fiscal year. But it has a, a series of unknowns as well. The General Assembly is meeting currently and the conversations that they'll have about any impact to SEEK. We, we have some, you know, some predictions about the number of retirements, the ability to retain staff. We haven't, we haven't necessarily finalized what any kind of raises would look like. So, so it does have a few assumptions in it that I think are important. And what you see in this spreadsheet is the current working budget for 2023-24 as it compares to the draft budget that we're presenting to you. One assumption is, is the 4% increase in, in local revenue, which is one that is important for us to, to plan around. I will, I will note, you, you can see a continuous increase. If, if our, if we don't see an increase in, in our SEEK allocations, the percentage of, of local tax burden is, is one that is, is important to, to remind our, our legislators around because it is a state, is a constitutional responsibility statewide. And so you see more and more over time of, of local taxpayers taking on the burden of, of, of our revenue sources. So it assumes that, it does assume a, a small increase in our tuition, tuition rates for additional revenue. It holds SEEK flat. All, all expectations currently is that we'll see a bump there. That, that's been a conversation in Frankfurt, on, on both sides of the aisle, and both by the governor as well as the General Assembly. So, so we would expect some increases there, but right now, we're planning our draft budget, assuming a flat SEEK base, which, which is a conservative approach and one that, that we, we think is really important. From payroll benefits, we are, we're planning in the draft budget a, a 2% plus step increase for payroll and benefits. That one will be adjusted if, if we can have an adjustment in the SEEK budget. And so we're, we're planning that at a worst-case scenario, which we expect and we feel very comfortable would be at least 2%. And we're very hopeful that we can increase that as we, as we go into, into the spring. It also, there's a, there's a line item around our computer leases. The last three years, we've, we've had, we've been able to use ESSER dollars there. That is no longer the case. And so you'll see almost a $350,000 increase in that expenditure that we've been able to cover with, with ESSER dollars in the past. It does include budgeting for what we're hoping would be a, an employee match for, for, for additional supplemental retirement program that many of our, our people are involved in. And then we've, we've put some inflationary cost in there as well. So, so the, the moral of the story is, is that really our, our finances, our budget is in very, very good shape. A lot of that is, is a result of decisions that this board has made. Important decisions around making sure we, we attract and retain staff, but that we're also very efficient and, and we make really good decisions with our dollars. And then, and then also the principals and teachers that have been super responsible with the resources that we have. So it, it does increase, and we've, we've had a step up and increase in, in dollars that have been allocated for instructional resources. Because having, having the best teachers, it only matters if you equip them with the right resources. And so, so we have increased that. And we've also increased over time a bit of, of maintenance and, and costs towards maintaining and making sure our facilities are, are in good shape. So, so it has those reflections as well. Our budget committees have, have, have been apprised of that. And we'll have better information as we get closer to May, but this is pretty, this is a pretty good, best guess for January. Andy, anything I left out?
I'd like to say it was an educated guess.
Yes.
Yes, an educated guess, yes. We, Budget Committee has had a chance to see it, and then the board has had a chance to, to see it as well last week. Does anybody have any questions that they want to, that you're, we have a good working knowledge of this?
Yeah, and I would agree with what Brian says, that it's a very healthy budget. It's in great shape and, you know, I think it gives us the ability to, you know, set sort of a, a low expectation for where we are with payroll and benefits, knowing that we're going to be probably able to do better than that once we get some more certainty out of Frankfurt. So I think the idea being that anything extra we have, that's where we're going to direct it.
Okay, anything else? Okay, I need an, I need a motion for the approval of the draft working budget for the 24-25 school year.
It's a motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay.
Andy, you can get home now to watch Michigan.
He was just waiting, he was just waiting to roll that in.
He was, I, I saw you.
He's at the window, he's over first.
Okay, the next section is on cleaning services pilot. Will you be the speaker for that, Brian?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So, so one of the areas that we've, we've had some challenges really for about a year and a half, and it's been amplified throughout the year, is attracting and retaining custodial staff. We've, we're exceeding a year where we've, we've actually had a full staff across the district. And so several, several school districts have, have, years ago, went to, to meeting to look at cleaning services and contracted services in order to meet those needs. And we started to research probably about six months ago what it would take, what the pros and cons would be, and if we wanted to run up a pilot program. So, so we did get a couple estimates and a couple proposals. And, and really were exploring the idea of having a pilot program maybe into next year. Since then, we had a couple other resignations. And so we, we have a proposal from First Green Building Services. That is a month-to-month pilot operation. We always like to have our people on staff and we like to have, you know, full-time employees. However, at the same time, it, it is, the, the economics make sense. And just in terms of, of attracting and retaining great staff is also something that we'd like to explore. Our expectation is that we'll always have a, a full-time, full-time as employee for the, for the day shift. We'll have some provisions in place for, for evening contacts in the district. But we would like to recommend that we start a, a pilot program with First Green Building Services for the second semester at Woodville Elementary and see, see how it goes. So that we can report out as we get closer in, in the school year to see. We won't be, we would transfer the one employee that is still on the second shift into one of the other vacancies. Or at least offer that, that opportunity to that employee. And so what I'm asking from the board is, is to authorize me to enter into this, this pilot program for, for a semester.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea to try to pilot. I mean, even as a board member, it's something I've heard about of, you know, hey, we, we need some help here or there with, with cleaning services and we've struggled to fill those, so I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I mean, we've outsourced in the past. I mean, I forget how many years ago it was. And it wasn't, you know, I don't, I don't know that we loved it at the time, which is why we don't, we weren't doing it again. But again, you know, times have changed, staffing is a, is a huge problem. So I think it's worth, worth trying out. I think we learned lessons years ago and Terry was around for that. And so I think you probably were around as well, you know, that we can take some lessons and apply here.
Yeah, that was not a great experience. The, the primary difference in this one is that outsourcing was really the management of, of our, of our services. In fact, the, the company that we outsourced to predicated Jerry in his, his role. He was, he was an assistant principal at the time. And so he went into the facilities director position when we decided that, that that wasn't for us. This, this will be a, a little different in that it's, it's the actual services as opposed to the, to the supervision of it. But hopefully we have a, a better outcome.
Okay, I need a motion for the approval to authorize the superintendent to enter into a cleaning services pilot agreement with First Green Building Services at Woodville Elementary.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes. All right, then the next section is tuition rates. You're going to do this, too?
Yep, we would like to go ahead and, and ask for, for the ability to set our tuition rates for the 24-25 year. I know it's January, but we're asking all of these things for, for next school year already. But we think it's important as we, as we get into the season of, of reviewing tuition applications and also communicating to families what our, our tuition rates would be. So the, the proposal you have in front of you does have a, a slight increase from last year's tuition proposals. It's, it's, it's smaller than the increase we had last year. It basically considers the 4% increase that we ask of our local taxpayers each year and, and it applies that to the tuition basis there. Couple things to remember about, about the tuition status of our students. Not only do we collect tuition at the rates that you see here, but also we receive the average daily attendance that comes from, from the state for these students as well. So, so it's well in excess of, of $6,000 when we have a, a tuition student in our district. Last year, we, we had the most that we've ever had. We have 223 tuition students currently. We only make those choices when it would not result in the need to, to add staff. So, so in other words, we're really targeted when, when we accept a tuition student, that there is room at a certain grade level or at a certain school and that we're able to, to, to meet those needs without adding a significant number of costs. I, I did run some of the numbers of, of what this brings in. With the, with the tuition students that we had this year, it's, and you consider the SEEK portion, it's, it's in excess of $1.3 million that is brought in in terms of resources to our school district. That, that is the equivalent when you consider average teacher salary in our district to be between 18 and 20 teachers. So it is, it is a significant add to our district. I will say, yeah, it, it does help us to, to offer programs like the broadcasting program and, and music and vocal instrumental strings, a whole variety of, of programs that you may not otherwise be able to, to get. I did, I did neglect to mention that we also are recommending that we maintain the employee discount so that employees who bring their children into our school district, their rate was $1,500 this past year. We're recommending that we maintain that. That's been a really good attraction and retention. That's been a really good attraction and retention benefit for our employees as well. So we've seen that as a definite plus. We love having our tuition students, we believe it brings some great benefit for us, but it mostly provides more opportunities for the families that live here in Fort Thomas. So this is our recommendation. Happy to take any questions.
Questions? We bring in some great students too, so it's win-win. Any other questions? Okay, I need a motion for the approval of the tuition rates for the 2425 school year for grades K through 12 at $3,650 in-state and $6,700 out-of-state, with an additional tuition charge for preschool of $300 per month, and to require a non-refundable application rate of $50, and continue the procedure to require a $250 non-refundable deposit for new tuition students to begin participation in athletics, curricular activities. All these will be applied to tuition if the student attends Fort Thomas Independent Schools. Any questions? Second? I know, it was a, it was one long run-on sentence, so that's good. Okay, we had a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right, and then we're going into the discussion items. Jerry, are you coming back up to talk about the pilot part, or, yeah, the sports complex at Tower Park, I should say?
So just a brief update for the Board and the community on the project, since they may have seen some activity around there. We did authorize the contractor, Ringo Blacktop, to begin the process, really right before the holidays, of removing some brush and some trees that will be in the path of the new road, as well as, you know, the work that's going to have to be done. As you know, Phase 1, which is the relocation of Sargeant Avenue, and some elevation change on Army Reserve, as well as the new entrance, is what we're working on this spring. So that work is underway, primarily just with the brush clearing now. You'll start to see some equipment done, you know, maybe even as early as later this week, as they start to get into the work of, you may be starting to, the earth moving that's necessary to support the relocation of the road. We've been continuing to do design work on Phase 2, and we've made some progress. As you know, we work with, we're working with a lot of entities on this project, the city of Fort Thomas, all of our neighbors, the neighborhood back there off of Sergeant Carmel Mayer, the Army Reserve Base. We've made a lot of headway on some of the issues that we need to get tied up before we put that Phase 2 out there.
Do you, any questions from anybody in the neighborhood?
I have not received any. I do know from some conversations Mr. Robinson and I have had, is that some of the communication that went out via the city, that was kind of a cooperative effort, was well-received, and, you know, we got a lot of positive feedback, not just on what the information that was presented, but that information was presented for the more, or that's the future.
We do have an outline of, sort of a timeline of what we would predict the work would be, given that it's in the middle of the winter. It's subject to change, but if you go to our website, it'll give an outline of those steps, and then any kind of major changes that would occur, we'll also keep it posted there. And then hopefully we'll be able to update with some video footage. I need to get, there's some drone footage out there from our student broadcast program that they did at the end of year, the end-of-year video, that was fantastic. So hopefully we can connect some of that as well. It's also, you know, the next question is what does Phase 2, or when does that look like that occurs? We would expect Phase 2 to begin in earnest in our conversation in April. There's, again, a lot that happens in the General Assembly that will determine how we, what that next Phase 2 looks like, and if it's a Phase 2 and then a 2B. There's some legislation that has to be extended, there's some supports of equalization of funds that we typically expect that impacts bonding capacity and even a little bit of support from the state.
Very good, we're excited about it. That's good, thank you.
All right.
All right. Mr. Faust, are you going to do CDE?
I am.
Okay.
But again, I echo what everyone has said tonight. Thank you so much for the School Board's support that you have, you know, patience with me as I'm coming to new role, and willingness to listen and learn, and so thank you so much for your support. You do a lot for our teachers, our students, and our community, so I appreciate it. So tonight, I want to talk about school improvement planning, the exciting world of school improvement planning. This is really, the District Improvement Plan is a culmination of our School Improvement Plan. So our principals and leadership, school councils have, for the past month, have been getting together, analyzing their Kentucky Summit of Assessment data, and compiling after their school improvement plan. And so what they do within a school improvement plan, there are multiple parts. One of the parts is the goal, and then from a goal, which is more of a long-term objective, a three- to five-year, a three- to five-year goal that they create, underneath each goal are objectives. And so if you remember what I reported a few months ago on the different areas of which we were evaluated, from the Kentucky Summit of Assessment, both reading and math, science, social studies, combined writing, and then the Quality of School Climate Survey, each of those have goals. And so these are the, kind of the constructs of the District Improvement Plan. And then what the State of Kentucky does for us is they provide what are called key-core work processes. And what those are, are there are six key-core work processes that the school leadership will take to say, all right, if we're going to really focus on maybe data analysis or instruction, they'll select that key-core work process, and that will help them write and craft their plan. So here you see there are different, the goal is up top, so the reading and math goal, or the science, social studies, writing goal, and then they have the objectives. Objectives are written out in one year at a time, and then building leadership will say, okay, what's the key-core work process? That's the strategy that goes into place, and then what are the specific activities that we're going to do? So you write a long-term goal, you write a short-term objective, you come up with a strategy of what we're going to focus on, whether that's instruction, whether that's data analysis, and then you focus on what are the activities that we're going to work on as a school, and then follow that up with how are we going to monitor, or how are we going to measure our success? And so those are the elements of a school improvement plan. I then take all of that and then compile it into a district improvement plan. And you see, these are the different areas of which I've highlighted. For our middle and high school, or, excuse me, our high school, they talk about post-secondary readiness and graduation rate. At our elementary, they have those five areas that I talked about. The state changed a few, two years ago, I believe, in terms of, you see those asterisks under the gap in the EL population? You have to have an N count of 30. So you have to have 30 students in a particular subgroup to be able to write a goal for that. We do not have that number at any of our five buildings to be able to write a goal for those. And so you don't, you will not see in any of our plans a gap goal or an ELL goal, because we don't have those sub-populations. Strike that. We do have gap. It's not a long-term goal, those are written as objectives. So the gap population, we do have those, we write those objectives, not long-term goals. All right, and then, so here are our goals from across the district. So you see on proficiency, we've got our combined reading and math, and we're going to strike those up. A difference from this year's school improvement plan from last year's, remember, this past year, they changed from, they included the change element to the Kentucky Summit of Assessment. So last year's District Improvement Plan would have said, we're going to increase our average index score. Now that we have that index score, plus the status score, plus the change, now we have an indicator score. Remember that kind of crazy math I went through? So what we have here is an average indicator score for our district. Again, if you were to go like Kentucky School Report Card, we don't necessarily have a Fort Thomas with elementary, middle, and high, and so what I've done is combined those for the proficiency and reading and math, to go from average indicator score of 79.3 to 85 in 2028. So again, a longer-term goal, combining those metrics to get us those numbers. That's how that was derived. There are separate academic indicators, that's when we use those areas of social studies, science, and combined writing. Achievement gap, again, as we're talking about that short-term goal, it's not a long-term goal. Quality of School Climate Survey, and so talks about school safety, also to how students perceive, you know, how they feel about their own success and how their teachers' relationship with them, that's what comprises the school quality climate. And then post-secondary readiness. On that one, I specifically said that we're just going to remain above 100. We had a, I think, a 10-point jump, Mr. Darnell, on post-secondary readiness?
No.
Five-point jump, plus the change, five, gave us a 10-point jump. Thank you.
Forgot about the bonus.
Yep, yeah, I forgot the bonus. And so we're going to remain, strive to remain above 100 on that post-secondary readiness. And then graduation rate, as a four- to five-year cohort, our graduation rate. And so those are our CDE goals. Next step, by the end of the month, we're going to send a survey out to our faculty and staff. We had a shift, and if you remember last year, on how we are doing professional development, professional learning this year, so we're going to get some feedback from our faculty and staff and see how that is going. Remember, that was a workshop and a cadre model to try to personalize some of our learning, so it really gets tied down to exactly where they can connect their personalized learning to, in their classroom. And then over the course, with those survey results, by the end of January, we'll move on to Phase 4, and we'll develop our professional development plans. And so our building leadership will also be working on their professional plans, and we'll share those out probably in May's leadership meeting, or, excuse me, May's board meeting. So that is our CDE.
You have to share these with the state?
We share them in the sense that we have to submit it to the state, yeah, and we have to publish them on our website.
Do they ever review them, give you comments back at all?
I have not received comments, as of yet.
Okay, I was just curious.
And then when you're trouble.
No loses here. Yeah, we're assuming they're perfect.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you. I know that, I'm anxious to see the results of surveys for the professional development, because I do think your model for years past, it's always been something that is relevant to me, and you really tried to work on that, so I'll be anxious to see what their reactions are to it.
Yeah, and you know, I think it's evidenced by the, I think, nine different cadre sessions that we had, the number of folks that signed up to lead cadre groups, we've got one that is actually going tomorrow. I think that's reflective that folks are wanting something different, and, you know, hopefully it met their needs, so.
All right. Well, thank you. Okay, next section is board committee updates. Does anybody have any updates from their committees?
Yes, and that's, I was looking on my phone to double-check some information, so make sure I had everything correctly, because I was like, wow, I think I have a lot of things to say here. First off, in terms of Education Foundation, Wednesday is the deadline to nominate outstanding support service staff members. So let me give you examples of what that entails, if you're wondering what, people who are eligible for that nomination include cafeteria workers, central office staff, custodial and maintenance staff, digital learning coaches, instructional assistants, health assistants, school nurses, school secretaries, instructional assistants. I think that got in there twice, so they really wanted you to know that. Technical staff, technology staff, and transportation. So the many people that support and help us run the school day, so think about that. Nomination information form is on the FTEF website. Also along those lines, I don't know, Clem has been reminded to mention it by his sister, but Parents Night Out.
I have not.
Okay. That's coming. Parents Night Out is going to be on March 2nd, and I go ahead and say that now, because the event did sell out last year. So $30 a ticket, get you appetizers, live music, 7 through 11 at the Country Club, and that is a big fundraiser for, you know, all the great grant work and the things that Foundation does.
Yeah, that was a great time last year, and did really well, so.
Is that what you're asking with the board, with the conference? Yeah, well, we'll be back by Sunday, so we'll just keep, we'll keep the party rolling. I was just, yeah, so there's that. I also have one thing to throw out there for.
Hall of Fame.
That's, that is accepting nominations.
If you get this one.
It was so good for a while. Okay, it's a semblance check.
Wow.
Turn it to 11, Jody. The Hall of Fame is accepting nominations until March 15th. So all the information for that is on the Athletic Department website. It's for athletes 20 years out, so 20 years from their graduation, and the teams, I believe it's 10 years out. You'll find more information about that, and the banquet for that event is going to be in August, and recognition there, and at the Blue and White Game as well. So just, the main thing is nominations, making sure, and those do roll from previous years, so if they're, they've been given, they're still up for consideration, but always feel free if you would want to add additional thoughts, letters, and, you know, onto that, they're more than welcome.
Anything else? I know, I feel like when you see the, when you see the committees up there, it'll be Julie's name on every committee, she's so busy. Breakfast Committee will continue doing breakfast, so we'll do, we'll do later arrival this month, next week. South Side Deli, breakfast sandwiches, so they love doing it for us, and we love having them do it, so we appreciate that. Anything else? You all will eat again. All right. Any other updates? Did we forget any updates that you could think of? Okay, then the next section is the approval of the consent agenda. And with all the board members having had the opportunity to review and pursue any questions about all of the items contained therein, I need a motion for the approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Then the next section is other business. Can you name anything? We've covered Watts. Okay, if nothing else is here, you're adjourned. Thank you.